I think we're ready to get started. I'd like to call it or the twenty or the May or May, February 5th, 2024, Work Session, and it's the agenda is the property tax revenue changes and the implications of what the new tax law will do to the city of Des Moines. I'll turn it over to the manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, council members. Thanks for taking the time to sit through this presentation. I asked Nick to put together a few slides for this morning to educate us all on the different impacts to our property tax revenues, given the more recent legislative changes that have occurred the last few years. And as such, it's to get us prepared, if you will, for the discussion on February 22nd, which will be the full day budget discussions. We have about six hours, I believe, scheduled for that, to making sure that we conclude by three, I believe, Councilmember Westergaard, to fit in everybody's schedules. So I wanted to make sure we covered this topic in advance of the 22nd. Again, you'll recall a lot of these legislative changes, but for the first time, we have two or three of them compounding on each other. And so with that, I'll have Nick come up, and we gave ourselves plenty of time this morning to have questions and answers as well.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks. Honorable Mayor, council members, today we'll be talking about property taxes and the changes that we've seen. So I've got some general information on property taxes, the tax system changes that we've seen over the last decade, or at least the high-level changes that we had, as well as our fiscal year 2025 property values and general levy that was affected by, obviously, the significant one that was more recent, the House File 718. Then we'll kind of talk about how our consolidated general fund levy taxes have grown year-over-year over the last 10 years, so you can kind of see what we're kind of what we're dealing with in that being the largest contributor of revenue to our general fund. So as I start talking about property taxes, it's a obviously a significant part of the city's revenue. It's about eight, 60% of our general fund revenue, so that's the largest chunk of revenue that we have from any other source. And then with that in mind, we're trying to, you have to have an understanding of property taxes, which, you know, all of us have our own properties where basically our residential is has a rollback to it, and then, so only a portion of the property is taxable, and that is the same as any of our commercial industrial properties as well. So knowing that and all the different variables from limitation of growth and a couple of the other, like, business tax credits, all those different variables come into play when we're coming in, coming up with, trying to figure out what our, our property taxes are going to look like from year to year. Some of the big key timing factors that we deal with is our state rollback. We don't know what the state rollback is going to be until the end of October, beginning of November. And this past rollback that was released is actually one of the largest reduction in rollback that we've ever seen. It went from 54 down to 46, which shows how much the, the property values grew statewide, because the function of, go ahead.
You go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say. Yeah.
How do we not know that until, I mean, there's not a formula in place for?
At, at the state level?
Yeah, what the rollback is gonna be?
They have to, they have to actually collect all that information across the state, and because the rollback is essentially, there's a couple of different factors of that. Statewide residential growth can only be limited to 3%, except for new construction, as well as there's a limiting factor of farm, ag, land-type stuff, too. So there's a bunch of different factors that come into play when they calculate that, and so they don't finalize that or don't, we don't have a, a good estimate of, of that until about that October, November, because all the, all of the values, the values start January 1, and then it takes the, the, the time of, of appeals and rulings on, on the Board of Appeals and different things like that to determine what those values are. Then, once they get closer to the end of what those values look like, then they can determine what that, that, the residential property looks like statewide.
So, so last year, it was 54.65?
Yes.
And this year, it's 46.34?
Yes.
We could go through the math of that just real quickly for people. So that's roughly an eight percentage point drop, starting at roughly 50%, which means year-to-year change on the dollars that that would produce is twice that amount. So eight percentage points is roughly 16% change one year to the next. 54%, 16% less of that is the 46 that you see there. So think about the fact that statewide, 99 counties submit their values, and they went up about 19%, roughly statewide, 19%. The rollback pushes it down 16%, which leaves you with a 3% increase statewide. Do you follow that? I mean, that's, that's how that calculation works.
But that's all you're allowed.
And so everybody's now gonna use the 46.34 on their individual values, parcel to parcel, jurisdiction to jurisdiction.
Is there a cap of how low it can go, or no?
No, there is no cap on how low it can go, but there are caps for, that don't allow it to grow quickly. Not, not to be too negative here in the conversation, but there, there is grave concern that we are close now to the agricultural tie from decades ago, and again, my apologies, but there's a lot of history here. And one of the controls that is in place that, that only is affected in, in certain years is that the rollback is only allowed to grow the 3% net that I just talked about as long as ag is also growing in the same year. And that has not always been the case. And in fact, we are back to a place where we're getting close to where ag may not be growing on its own at 3%, which would force the residential rollback down potentially another three percentage points annually. And so there's, there's a, a lot to the, the formulas. I'm welcome to, Nick and I can sit down with you further if you're interested in more detail behind that. But the concern, in prior years, it used to be 4% instead of 3, and so there's been a lot of changes that compound on each other. So now you know more about the rollback.
Yeah, and, and so obviously, that, the, the varying changes from year to year is also one of the major components of why I think property taxes are a bit confusing for our residents as well, because all the different factors that kind of play into that, and it's kind of like late in the game where, where we kind of find out what that, that rollback really is.
So basically, when you had property tax, when they were getting a 20% increase, what would it ends up being? 3%?
Yeah, once you come into, yeah, the, the 100% assessed value is different than the taxable value, and that's what the rollback kind of comes into play. So that's why it's, it's really hard to be able to, to have those discussions when they would have seen that at the beginning of the year, and now we realize that it, the taxable portion, it went out 8%. So very, very, there's a lot of different variables into that. Also, for all the taxing entities, like the municipal, municipalities, property values aren't finalized till January 1st, so we don't get final numbers until all of our, the counties that we're in, which is Polk and Warren County, are submitted to the state. That's when they have their due date, and I don't know if they have ramifications if they don't, but we've, we've had a county not submit on time either. So as we're trying to finalize our numbers for our budget, we're, we don't get final numbers until the beginning of, of January. So we've had those, it was a little bit later than January 1st this year, but, so we've had those for about a month, those finalized numbers, as we're working through these. There has been several significant changes over the last decade that has altered and limited local government's ability to generate property tax revenue. The biggest thing that I wanted to kind of point out, and what we're gonna talk about going in, in some of these slides, is that consolidated general fund levy, which is what we, which, for us, has always been 810, our 810 levy, that kind of covers our basic governmental services, which include the salaries, contractors, suppliers, and equipment costs to provide those services. The reason why they refer to it as the consolidated general fund levy is they actually took a bunch of those, a bunch of levies that the cities could do and kind of consolidate them. We only use the 810, but there was the emergency levy, there was supplemental, like, library, orchestra, symphony-type things that really were, should have kind of make sense to be included with the 810, but it was a supplement, some of them were by vote, some of them were not, but they consolidated all of that in the House File 718. So listing some of the property tax changes, I kind of hit the high, high notes on, on some of these. There's obviously a bunch of different minor changes. These were the kind of the biggest ones that I wanted to point out. The commercial industrial rollback, that was back in 2013, reduced the commercial and industrial rollback from 100% down to 90%. They did that over a two-year period, and then, basically, it's been at that 90% since then. If you look at just this, the fiscal year that we're currently sitting in, that's a $7 million difference, that 10% for the city of Des Moines. There is a, a rollback that I noted, but it's been paraded or being phased out over, over the next handful of years. We also have the multi-residential rollback, where they reduce the, that was being taxed as, similar to the commercial industrial at 100%, and they were rolling that down to the residential rate, which is a varying factor. And so for 2024, we were at that 54% rollback, so 24's impact was about just under 6 million. Last year, there was the residential rollback calculation change. Basically, the essence of that was the multi-residential was being used as it was merged with residential properties. It was used in the calculation to determine the rollback for last, for this current fiscal year we're in, which made the rollback 56.449. It was determined that that's not what the legislature wanted, and so they went back and said that they wanted to disconnect the multi-residential out of that use of calculation of the growth of, limiting the growth of 3%. And so in doing that, that actually brought the rollback down an additional almost 2%. What that did for the city's standpoint, it was 3.5, 3.5 million dollar loss for us. We actually had a, a negative growth in this current fiscal year that we're in. We actually had a 1% decrease instead of the 1% increase that we had. And also, it kind of creates a unique situation where multi-residential values aren't actually used in the calculation of the rollback, so that will, that will kind of flow without an effect statewide. So it's kind of an interesting approach that, that they did with that Senate File 181.
So, so what did they use?
Basically, just used residential property, and they excluded the multi-residential in that growth calculation that we had. So as we were kind of talking about earlier with what we have for fiscal year 2025, we had that 19% growth and then had to limit it to 3. That's why we had that 8% decrease. So in that year, basically, that calculation was in there because there was not as much growth in the multi-residential. So once you put that, took that out of the calculation and just looked at residential property, it, it caused that to decrease another 2%.
Just want clarification for those that are listening. Multi-residential is essentially apartment buildings where you have multiple units of residential in the same building.
Yeah, for, for fiscal year 2024, because of, of the rollback calculation, the, our total growth was negative 1%.
All classes?
All, all classes.
Combined?
Yep. Yep. Because our biggest, our biggest percent, our biggest number of the dollars for value, residential is the largest component. So when you change the rollback of residential, it, it significantly changes what we see as a, our taxable value and our revenue growth. Now we have to kind of talk about things a little bit different. Normally, we usually just reference the taxable growth and the, the taxes growth, which is, is two different components prior to this fiscal year 2025 we're going into, because now, because of the next slide, we have to kind of keep, we have to reference two different growths. We have to talk about our taxable valuation growth and then our consolidated general levy growth.
Suburbs, so for somebody like Ankeny who has extreme, a lot of residential, that they're not affected like we are, is it?
Well, they're, they're affected, but not, we were at that cusp where we were at a 1% growth, and so a change of a 2% decrease, we went negative, whereas they might have, you know, like a 15% growth, 2% would still keep them at a 13.
So they're still seeing growth. We're the ones that are seeing the, the negative.
We were just right where we, right where we were. We ended up going from positive growth of about a 1% to a negative growth of 1%. State funding, backfill payments, so we've got kind of two different things here. The commercial industrial rollback that we talked about at the first part of this slide has been phased out over, over each year. For fiscal year 2024, it is about 3.8. So in comparison, it's almost about 50% of that is being covered, and it's gonna be phased out over the next couple of years. Then the business property tax credit, that was a program that they, that originally came into place, and I think in 2013, but it was by application, and then what Senate File 255, 2552, basically did is it, it applied to all businesses. Basically, what that does is it allows those commercial industrial properties that the first 150, first 150,000 of, of their property is taxed as a residential rate instead of the 90%. So it kind of creates that, a, an order, a credit for them to being taxed instead of 90% at the, this coming year will be 46% at the first 150,000. If we look at just what that effect was in the current fiscal year, all of those components over that is, is 12 and a half million dollars that we've had to kind of deal with over the change from year to year. And then we go into the House File 718, which kind of creates a little bit more confusion on, confusion on our growth, because we now have to kind of look at our property tax revenue growth as well as our valuation growth. So we have to have two different components that we're looking at in that scenario. What it basically does is it creates two different limiting factors. So if, if a municipality grows at over 3%, you basically get a trimming factor, is what it's, what people refer to it as, of 2%. So if you grow beyond 3% in any given year, you're limited on how much you can grow by decreasing what you can only grow. So like, for example, 4%, if you grew at 4%, you have a trimming factor down to 2, and then it, it deflates your 810 levy to generate only that 2% growth instead, which is different than what our valuation growth is. So the valuation growth is 4, but the property tax growth on the general levy is 2. So you, we have to kind of talk about both components now instead of just one.
But when you bring up about the trimming, so if we were at 8, we would have gone down?
So there's two different trimmings, sorry. So when you get past 3, it's a 2% trimming, but if you get past 6%, it's a 3% trimming. One of the concerns that I'm thinking that a lot of municipalities have is if you get, if you're at 2, 2.9% growth, you're good. 3.1, you get a 2% trimming, you actually only be able to grow 1.1%. If you, 5.9, you get trimmed by 2, so you're still at 3.9, but 6.1, you're trimmed down to 3.1. So you're, there's kind of this weird, once you get past, once you get, just as soon as you get past that, you actually deflate beyond, down below.
A lot of thought went into this, that's for sure.
It, it, well, it's, yeah, you fall off a cliff, and then you have to wait for it to come back up, and then there's another cliff that happens, so it's.
Seems like it's an uneven cliff.
Yes.
That was, that's how the law's being interpreted, but was that the intention?
It, it was how, it was how it was written.
Yeah, so it's pretty clear that nobody knows what that intention was, because it was shared and passed within 24 hours, and so that there was not a lot of discussion about what intent.
Okay, so, so now that communities like ours are starting to realize the impact, is there any corrective legislation that, that is being discussed for this session, or?
That is something that we've brought up with, with, yeah, our lobbyists and intent to try and get that corrected. As you might imagine, the, the system has become even more complex, so how to fix that is a very real challenge with 960-some cities impacted by, by these changes. So what really needs to happen is, is some lengthy conversations about what they are trying to do with their intent, and then be given some options to choose from. I mean, that's the best way to approach it, so that they know what impacts would, would occur.
So do we have any indication from other communities how this impacting the, and conversations here?
It, a few, yeah. It, I, I see a lot of people, especially the communications that I've had with other, other finance directors around, a lot of them are in the limiting factor as well, so they're at least seeing the 3 to 6. The ones that I've communicated with tend to be above the 6, but they're still seeing that, that shaving of attempt that's happening, so. Statewide, though, I believe the League of Cities is, is working with the state to compile information now that, that information is at the state level where they can actually pull valuations to see who falls into what category, so they can actually look at it, the total population across the state.
This is really just all came in the first of the year, so it's very quick turnaround for a lot of these smaller communities.
Yep, so to, to know all of them, that's why the League of Cities is taking the, the steps to go forward to look at how, how many are in that, you know, fell off that cliff, per se, of that 3% cliff or the, the 6% cliff. From, from our estimation in the calculation for this coming budget, that actually affected us by about a million and a half, because we did get a limiting factor on us as well. So from that, we, we actually did grow at 4%, and so we did get a limiting, a 2% limiting factor on us as well. So when we go and talk about our growth here in a couple of weeks, we'll be able to kind of talk about that, that difference of our taxable growth versus our, our actual property tax generation growth as well. And then this last, the last bullet is one where it's a little bit harder to fully estimate the effect from each year. This is additional exemptions and credits that was also passed within 718, where they did additional homestead and military credits for eligible homeowners, elderly, different things like that. So not knowing how that exactly affected us, we'll have to get a year or two under our belt to figure out how that truly affected us as well. And I think the elderly credit is, was, was a phase in as well, so however it affected our 25, will double in 26. There's a lot of numbers on here, so I apologize, but this kind of shows the property value and our general levy, or the consolidated general fund levy calculation for our fiscal year 2025. So this gives us what our valuation growth, or what our valuation is for 1123. So that's what we use to generate for our fiscal year 25. And then that bottom table that we have there kind of talks about how to do the calculation. So we, our max rate, which, once it's consolidated, ours was only at 810, we didn't have any of the other levies that merged into that consolidated rate, and it actually gave us the, the total dollars that we would have, that we levied with that 810 last year. So then it actually takes the calculation of what that non-tip taxable with the gas and electric, what that valuation was, and it basically looks at our regular levy from up above, which is that 92, and show that that's a 4.11% growth that we would have seen valuation growth from fiscal year 24 to 25. Since we were over the 3, we had the limiting percentage of 2, which then basically creates this situation where it calculates out that our max dollars that we can generate is that 73.1 in the middle there at the bottom. With that calculation, it basically deflates our 810 levy down to 794. So basically, it calculates out how much we're limited and then generates a new rate, and so we can no longer tax at 810, it can only be taxed at 794, 118.
So part of this is getting more complex by changing the rate, because they recognize that at the end of the day, they need to be able to send out, you know, 10, the county needs to be able to send out tens of thousands of property tax bills, right? And instead of creating yet another valuation, so you have your 100% actual value, which is the market value of your home or property, and then we have this taxable amount of valuation, which includes the rollback. Instead of creating yet another valuation, what they've done is say, well, use the value that you've got, the taxable value, but now force the taxing authority to lower the rate by that 2%. So that way, they can still apply everybody's values, but now you'll have a lower tax rate that was 810 before.
Our obligation to tell the county what it is in the city, or do they re-figure it, or how does that work?
Yeah, so the next process is notifying everyone.
So the, the piece that I didn't quite go into, which is the non-limiting of the taxes, the other part of 718 happened where all the different taxing entities have to get information to the county, and they're gonna accumulate that information of all the different hearings and the proposed rates by all those taxing entities, so not just cities, but what the county has, what the school has, all the different taxing entities have to submit that information to the county. Their deadline to them is March, March 20th, I wanna say, March 15th, March 20th. They're asking for it early, because that's a lot of information for them to get, because we have to get it to them by March 15th. They have to mail it out by March 20th by law, so they have five days in theory, if any of those taxing entities decides to do that. So they have to send it out to all their property owners. So the state is, is asking all the taxing entities to get it to them earlier, hoping for like a March 4th, March 5th timeframe, so that they have enough time. earlier, hoping for like a March 4th, March 5th timeframe, so that they have enough time to accumulate that information and send out that statement to all property owners. And then that gives them all the different taxing entities and what their proposed rate is, and when those hearings are. So, in, in that regard, it's, that piece of it is, is kind of a change in, in how we approach systematically, how we, how we approve our budgets and everything like that. It's just another layer that doesn't actually affect the, the property tax dollars, but that was another part of that change. So, if we look at what the consolidated general fund levy taxes are, so what our tax rates are over the court, so the 810 levy, basically, what that 810 levy, and then what that 794, 118 levy would do in our fiscal year 2025, this shows you what our annual growth or loss was from year over year. So, the very first one that I have on here is fiscal year 2016. It, the, the growth in our property taxes from one year to the next was actually zero. It was basically a stagnant growth from 15 to 16. So, you can kind of see, we, we bounce back, we go up and down every year. That's, in essence, from the reassessment year that we see every, all the time. And you can kind of see, we've had variations, but as we referred to earlier, the fiscal year '24 was actually a negative, negative percent growth in our, our 810 levy. And so, as you can kind of see, our growth is kind of veering down in the up, the even below our, our average. So, you can kind of see that blue line there is our average of 3.32. If we can stay, if we stay consistent to our average, we, in theory, would be a trimming of 2% every year. Like, in theory, we'd be trimmed every time in that scenario. So, we would be limited on our growth going forward if we maintain our current average.
But if we're 2.9, we'd be good.
2.9, we would be good.
Does the law change the every-other-year assessment, or anything like that? So, the 2.6 is our peak year, right? That, this should be our good year.
This should be our good year, yes.
Which was 4%.
Which was 4%.
That's how they trimmed it.
Yep. So, this is where we start getting into that valuation growth versus our, our property tax growth in that 810. So, we did have a 4%, which was very similar to what we had in fiscal year 2023, but because of that limiting factor, it got trimmed down to 2. So, that's kind of the nuance that we get to talk about every year with, with 718.
Does this affect other taxing entities in the exact same way? Or is, is this piece unique to municipalities? So, I mean, the school district, for example, has, has, has something similar, right?
Yeah. The school district does. I don't think it was any of the other, I don't think community college or, or-
There are, right, eight or nine different taxing entities. Do they-
Well, understand that the, this only impacted cities in the tax rate, the 810 tax rate is exclusive to, to cities. With schools, they are, they have a guaranteed payment from the state. So, they, they calculate how much valuation and property taxes they can get off of their rates, and then the state comes in on top of that to make sure that 85% or some number close to that of their total budgets funded through those two mechanisms, and then they fill the top.
Right. So, so this only applies to the-
The 810 piece of it.
The 810, which is a municipal-specific deadline.
But there were separate other changes they made to the county, maybe just the county. I'm not sure about the others.
So, as we kind of go through our recommended budget that we'll be kind of releasing and working towards, the workshop that we have on the 22nd, we are, you know, working towards kind of handling this limiting factor that we have, and it will be something that we have to deal with unless things change legislatively, on how we can approach those, that limiting factor. Because we won't know, and we won't know entirely how that's going to look like with those timing factors that I talked about earlier. What does the rollback look like? What does our true valuation growth looks like from year to year? So, we've got ways to kind of estimate it, but it, it can easily change. And when you're talking about, when you're talking about a growth, a huge difference between a 2.9% growth and a 3.1% growth, it really throws a curveball when you end up having a slightly change to some of your assumptions. So.
So, I would let the council know that there are really two concerns with, with what we presented to you this morning. There's, how do we get the next year's budget done? I will tell you that we already have a balanced budget ready to go for the 22nd. However, the second question and concern is strategically, how do we find a pathway forward such that our property tax growth is sustainable at a level that sustains our operations, given that it's 60% of, of our revenue source? That nut, we have not cracked yet. And so, we're still working through what a multi-year budget would have to look like, knowing that in reality, it's going to be likely for us, in a best-case scenario, about 2.9, 2.8% growth annually. And historically, you'll see on this chart, we had 3.3. It may seem like a small number, but it's still millions of dollars a year that, that get added or lost if the, if the structure changes on us like it has. So.
Yeah, just a, a thing that was, was always said in finance is a, a small percentage of a big number is still a big number. And we-
6.3 growth-
Or more.
To get that to 3.32.
Correct.
Is what we're-
Correct.
What our goal would be to.
Yes. And we've had two years that we actually were able to accomplish that intent. And because we know there's always-
Doesn't 5.3 get there too?
Yes.
Does 5.3 get there?
Yeah.
You only go down 2.
5 minus 2, it's 3.3.
You just have to get above, or they're not going to cut you back.
That, that's stupid.
Two, two different numbers get you to the same ending point.
Except for 3.3.
Well, three numbers. Very good.
3.3 doesn't get it, you would think that that-
3.3 gets it to-
To 1.3. Yep.
I would hope that we would keep talking to legislators to explain the complexity. I can't imagine what some of the smaller communities are going through to figure all this out.
Yeah. So, where typically, we would look at a two-year budget, knowing that whether you're in a down year, you've got an up year coming, or vice versa. I, what, I'm not certain we should, should be doing it that way anymore. But we, we need to work with them up at the state to find a solution that's sustainable at something closer to inflationary cost for, you know, wages, since 70% of our budget is people, services.
Like, just in a snapshot, an important talking point, I think, is 70% of our expenses in the former 810 levy are people, and most of those are under contract.
Correct. Your labor union contract.
Yeah. So, what, what is the average of our labor union contracts for next fiscal year, for '25?
I don't know. They average 3 and 1/2 fours.
Yeah, we're, the, we don't have them all, yeah, we don't have them all determined yet.
Yeah. They're still in negotiations for next year, but for the current year, we're around 3.
Oh, yes. For current year, we're in that 3 and 1/2.
It's always above 3, almost always.
So, our non, I mean, we're in a position at 2, that our non-salary expenses are going to have to be cut in the 8, in the 810 levy or the-
Or, yeah, so we find other sources to pay for those wages. And it's, it's important to understand, it's even higher than that. Because if you go to the slide that talks about your general levy and what it pays for, we have a separate levy for pensions and a separate levy for healthcare. So, the 810 levy was paying for, we'll get the number, but it was probably closer to 80% of that, that cost is wages with contractual services, some supplies, some commodities, and only minor equipment costs that are included in that. So, yeah, that's a challenge. And we've solved it. We have a solution for you for the next fiscal year, but I'm worried beyond that.
That we need to be looking at. Well, that very positive presentation and news for the city. Are there any other questions? If not, I would say we are adjourned at this work session, and we will come back at 4:45 for presentations and the regular meeting at 5 o'clock. So, we will see you back here.
Scott, is that budget date firmed up for the 22nd? I don't know that I've seen a-
I didn't.
No, it didn't come out today.
Okay. But at the 22nd is what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
And Investia Sam is looking to make the change.